To take notes.
Um, I have not, sorry, we are recording. Um, I have, uh, we can both take notes. This is gonna be recorded. So I can take the minutes once I have a little bit more time to get them approved at our January meeting, including the ones from last meeting. Madam Chair.
Okay, sounds good. So we will open the meeting. Uh, I guess I have a call to order and we need somebody to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Brett, did you want to do that again?
Absolutely. I'm gonna stand here. It's a little awkward. I apologize.
Yeah, I get nervous. I think I'll.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
So, um, so we have under the, uh, uh, okay, so I'm just reading the, okay. So we have under the old business, we have, uh, four items.
Some of them may have been, Madam Chair, already decided. I just copy and pasted. So my apologies if some of this is already done.
Yeah, no. I'm trying to remember what we talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we had, um, there's four items on, on air to review and discuss. The Open Space Recreation Plan, the Town on Map, the annual Open Space Annual Report, and, uh, the photos. So, um, well, I guess, uh, we can talk about the Open Space Recreation Plan. We just received section five of the plan.
Yes.
A lot of people haven't had a chance to review it. Do people wanna, um, maybe give people a few minutes to review it?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine with me, Madam Chair. Um, while people take a moment to peruse chapter five, section five, excuse me, can I just touch upon the annual town report? I do have more information on that.
Okay, sure.
Yep. Um, so we do, as is customary, I was putting together a, um, committee and board handbook. And, um, we have a whole annual town report section. Um, and so in that section, we have come to the decision that every year going forward, the annual town report, oh my god, look at Ellen's baby. It's all I see in the background. Um, the annual town reports for every committee will be due by January thirty first. Um, so we have about a little over a month, uh, to get something together. Um, so that's great.
What was it again? January twenty third?
January thirty first.
Thirty first, ah, the end of the month, okay.
Yep. Um, and again, that's for the annual town book that we put together with everyone's annual town reports for the June, um, annual town meeting every year. Um, so that's great. We have some time. We'll have a lot to report, obviously, um, as we've been doing a lot. Um, and so I just wanted to make everyone aware and maybe we can talk about, um, later tonight, maybe who will do what. Meaning, um, instead of having one person write the entire thing, maybe one person writes a paragraph about this, one person writes a paragraph about this, and then that way, everyone writes a paragraph and then that's the whole report. So we could talk about that later, but I did just want everyone to be aware of the January thirty first deadline.
Okay, that sounds good. That sounds doable.
Yeah, definitely.
And, uh, the section five that I sent around, guys, if you want to take time to read it and just send me comments, that's possible too. That's no problem at all. I didn't expect you to review it on the fly. So that's, that's, yeah, that's absolutely fine, because what I'll be doing is, things are pretty much written. It'll be like section seven and nine that I sent you before. They're pretty much written and I took your comments after you read them, came back and the comments were inserted. So you can do the same thing right now. Read it at your leisure.
Yeah.
And, cause I'd, I'd want you to make sure that you go over it well. If there are any facts that have changed especially, or if there's not enough included, and you know, Kevin, you might know too, because I'm talking about the recreation facilities, things like that.
Yep.
Um, yeah, you just, you can just pass it on in notes. Send it back to me with, you know, mocked up or however you want to do it. And that's fine. That way, nobody's in a rush. You don't have to do it in a rush tonight, and we can get through the rest of the agenda, you know, in a timely fashion. And I'll be, I'll be sending you, I'll tell you at the end, updates to, uh, things that I looked at that have changed, uh, significantly, probably in the last three months, that we can add to other sections that we'd already completed. So what I'll be doing is sending you around those changes that I'm gonna make to those sections, so that you can see how things have changed and what I'll be adding. And that way, again, you can make sure that everything, you know, is up to snuff.
Bill, how many more sections do we have to complete?
Um, we're done. I mean, basically, what you do, you do the plan in a way where you put together all your information, Jess, and get it all together. And then you go back and write the introduction, because, which is section one, which is what the plan is all about and the purpose of the plan. So that's where we are now. We've.
So we've gone through everything. We're, we're almost there.
We're almost there. So I will be sending you section six, which is a rehash of the process that we went through. You know, all the board interviews and the survey and stuff. And again, that's just to check. And then we should be all set. And the sections that I'm gonna send you that need, um, so update tweaks are gonna be in section four, where we actually have some more environmental challenges that have come up from the municipal vulnerability plan. And, um, in the last few weeks, I've actually been working with, uh, your town's MVP, core committee, Somerset's MVP core committee, and Swansea's MVP core committee to come up with what we call a regional addendum for your MVP plan. And there's some really neat regional projects in there that would definitely, uh, fall under the environmental challenges type of thing. But the beauty of it is, it's all three towns working together to solve more regionally based environmental problems. And it's, a lot of it's near and dear to our heart. Things around Broad Cove, things around, you know, the dam in Somerset that could affect Dayton if it ever, if it ever went. You know, stuff like that. So it's really cool. So I'm gonna be adding things like that into it.
Awesome. Are we still thinking we're on track for the, and Bill, this is for you, cause I know you're really a big driving force between the act, uh, for the actual writing. Are we on track for, um, a January acceptance date in our, um, meeting is probably what? The third meeting, third Tuesday of the month in January?
Usually a third Monday.
Third Monday, excuse me.
That's what I'm shooting for. Hopefully, I'll get all these things back to you. You can review them. And once they're all reviewed, I'll pop them in the plan, do the introduction, and we should have a final draft that is acceptable, you know, to submit to DCS. And then they'll get back to us with their comments anyways, and then we'll just wrap it up. But to all extents and purposes, we'll be done with what we have to do.
Awesome.
And when DCS comes back with their letter of comment, I'll, I'll address all the tweaks for you.
That's fabulous, Bill. You know, and I'm only, I'm only asking that because as the primary writer, I never want to put that person in an unrealistic timeframe. I know a lot of this work was already done before I even joined as a non-voting member. Um, so that's why I wanted to just double check on that, Bill. So I do appreciate that. And we appreciate all the work that you and the committee together have put into this.
It's been funny, a funny process, because we've had the hiccups where we haven't, haven't had the membership to vote on things.
Yeah.
It actually is gonna make your open space plan a lot more relevant, you know, up to date, relevant, include things like the MVP plan, the, uh, hazard mitigation plan, the regional plans. So, um, something like this is actually gonna be more timely.
Can I ask a quick question, just to, cause obviously, like, still, for me, I'm still catching up on a lot of this. Is that the point that we're, is that what we need to get to, is that we're submitting it to DCS by a certain date? Is that, is that the deadline that we're trying to reach?
What we'd like to do, Brett had asked me at the last meeting, and unless you were really aware of it, it would have slipped through. Um, you have a community compact agreement with the state, and at least submitting a final draft of the open space plan to DCS was part of that agreement.
Okay.
It went by the board last year because the committee crashed and burned, and we had nobody to vote on anything. So now, this year we do, we can submit it to, um, community compact, so you get that out of the way.
Okay.
Get the open space, so it's a two for one.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll submit them both at the same time, and you guys should be all set.
Uh, but to, and I think I know what you're getting at, Kevin. I think it's like a self-imposed deadline. We just wanted to.
Okay.
Done while we have, let's be frank, while we have a committee, while we have a committee that can have a quorum and meet. We, cause a lot of this was already done. Um, so it is a self-imposed deadline in that sense.
Okay.
And I think, to Bill's point, um, it's, there's so many advantages to getting it done and getting it accepted. Um, we can go out for another round, as Bill said, for community compact funding for different new best practices. Probably one would be ADA, I would suspect. Um, and so there's just, it opens so many doors, that's all. More grant opportunities.
Right, giving you more time for those things.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, yeah, and I was looking at your ADA, um, you guys have probably all looked at, and Kevin, you're probably familiar with it too. Uh, you guys really don't have a big lift in your ADA section as far as funds to get everything addressed at those parks, so, uh, that would be a great grant.
I think we have like fifteen bucks or something. That's about where, no.
Well, that's, that's why we.
That committee is like a whole nother animal, because that, uh, that's so new that, that's like just getting off the ground. So we haven't even, funding is, it's really not, not even come into the conversation. It's more like identifying issues. And then being prepared, so like, where we can collaborate with a committee like this to make improvements to, you know, parks and, and other, you know, recreational areas as they come up, so.
Yeah, that'll help, and there's different sources of funding that you can mix and match too. And I'd be more than happy to help you guys, uh, go after that too. I've worked with towns to go after ADA funding, so.
Thank you, certainly appreciate it.
This is good. This is all good.
It is. You've done, you've all done, um, I'm just really pleased with everything that you all have come up with together. Um, and I'm sure Kevin, obviously, you and I are the late ones to the party. Um, but when I read it, I'm just really amazed at what you all were able to accomplish together in the last, you know, what, two to three years, I think.
Two and a half, yeah.
And then all the different comings and goings of different members, um, you really have all been the cohesive core of it. And it's just a really proud moment, like, uh, we're on the precipice of just a really big moment. So it's just, um, I just want to give you all kudos for a job well done.
Thank you. Yeah, so isn't the new, you, the new conservation commissioner, the new conservation agent, she was here previously. Wasn't she the one who worked on the open space plan before? Was she the same?
Was. She actually spoke about that. Lisa Caladonia, Bill.
Is she back in town?
Yeah, she's our conservation agent. She starts on January fourth, I believe.
Oh, I've known, I've known Lisa since she was a baby, practically, yeah. I, I worked with her on the two thousand and three conservation plan. So this is fabulous to get her back in town to someone so, who's so familiar with Dayton and someone that I've worked with before. I mean, this is gonna be great for you guys. We can pick up kind of right where we left off, because not, not a lot happened in the interim. And she's the one who actually, we were working together when she, um, approached the state to allow, uh, Dayton legislatively to use the rollback tax on chapter sixty-one properties to set up an acquisition fund. She worked with Senator Pacico's office to do that. So, yeah, Lisa's fabulous. She's absolutely fabulous. Good move, you guys. Good move getting her back.
We get it right sometimes, Bill. A broken clock is right twice a day, they say.
Oh, that's awesome.
Okay, so, um, we also had on here to discuss the map, the town on map and spreadsheet. Did, Bill, did you get a chance to check those parcels that I was questioning?
I did. I checked it with Karen Porter, who's our GIS person, you know Karen. And, um, she went into the state database, and it's pretty much what they have right now, which would be everything that you guys have submitted. Remember, I told you it's gonna be old, you know, old plans, or whatever you've submitted up to date. So maybe the last actual, um, land use stuff might have been when, um, you get CRs and stuff like that. So, so the conservation lands that were showing up on there as being, you know, most up to date. They would be on there, probably Arujos, say APR would be on there, stuff like that. But I'm gonna have Karen check again, because before the end of the year, I know, um, my other colleague Helen Zinkavage went in the other day. And, um, she looked at it, and she said there were some slight updates, but I would doubt anything's come out of Dayton, you know, Ellen, the last one. Yeah, so, yeah, so what we have is what we have with the state. But now when we turn the new maps in with the updated properties, they'll digitize it. Apparently, they're keeping up to date pretty well. They're trying to keep up to date with the new open space layer.
Okay, good. That's good. Uh, then we had, so I think, oh, so I think the next thing we have to cover, um, we've covered the annual report as well, so the open space cover photos.
Yes.
So I, um, sent Bill the photos, and then I sent him, I got approval from each person to, um, to be able to use their photo, and I submitted the names to Bill.
Cool. Yeah, that's good. So we'll have a nice cover.
And thanks, Jess, Jess was using her psychic powers there, because the question I was gonna ask everybody tonight was, I have to get the photos, the credits for the cover photos, and Jess sent me a thing about five minutes ago. She said, we have to credit these people for the photos. Okay, boy, talk about getting on the same, you know, groove here.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, that's really nice, uh, to have, uh, some little bit of, um, town, a little bit more town input, you know?
Oh, yeah. People love that, when you, they use their photos and they recognize, it makes them part of the plan. They're invested.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so, um, uh, so we're on to the new business. Um, I ha, I guess I have some new business. I don't know, but I might as well just start, and if anybody has something else, we can talk about that too. Um, so we had talked, actually, it's not really new, I suppose, about providing, creating a place to put our, uh, documents electronically, so we can all share them and keep track of our minutes better and, and agendas and stuff. So I checked out a couple of different options that I knew of. Um, I think Brett was right, that the Google Drive is probably the best one. And I've already started to put some documents on there. And, um, I'm not certain how this works. Maybe Brett can fill me in. So like, if I wanna share it, do we have to share? Should I be sharing the login information?
Nope.
How does this work?
That's why it's so, that's why I love Google Drive so much. So when you click that share, that blue share button in like the top right-hand corner, when you're on Google Drive, um, you will type in our email addresses, and I don't think it, unfortunately, it can't be our dot gov emails. It has to be like our Gmails or whatever. Um, so we'll have to share that info with you, but that's how it's done. That gives us access. It's not, there's no password. Um, it's just the people who you share it with are the only people that have access to it. But I do wanna comment, um, we were able to get a lot done with the Agricultural Commission by doing this. Um, we were able to put the agricultural work plan, shout out Bill, um, on a Google Doc, um, and then go from there. So we copy and pasted Carver's agricultural work plan and literally went through as a committee in a couple meetings, uh, section by section, and we were able to edit it together in real time. It was the coolest thing. Um, and we were super productive. We literally almost got the whole thing done in one meeting. So, um, it's just gonna be a great tool for us as a committee.
Um, Brett, just a quick question. Do we have to have a Gmail to share?
I'm not sure if you have to have a Gmail.
No, I will open it through your web browser, Brett.
Okay, okay, because I sat there for the longest time when someone tried to send it to my dot gov through the town, and I literally never got the invite to the document. It never came, so I don't know what happened. I don't know, I don't think it has to be Gmail, but I don't think the town, like, lets that. Like, when I, when I worked with the town administrator on documents together on the Town Business Guide, we had to do it through our Gmails.
Yeah, I get, I get emails from like the school with stuff for my kids that goes to my personal email, which is not Gmail. And, um, I don't have any issues. It just asks you if you wanna open it in the web browser, and then it lets you open the docs. I don't know if there's limitations on, on editing or anything like that, but, um, I know you can at least open it, read it.
Yeah, you can set the, like, who can view it, edit it, blah, blah, blah. You can do that through, um, through the actual Google Drive or the, the Google Sheet.
So when you go to share it, it will say, and edit, can view.
Yes.
And you'll make that decision. I just didn't know whether my AOL account, which is separate from my Gmail account, would work.
I think it just, I don't think you, I don't think it should be a problem. We'll try it. You'll know if you don't get the invite with it, you know, and everybody else does.
Right.
You know, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I'll send that out. I'll try to do that right after the meeting, and, and so people will know.
Oh, Ellen, I have a lot of those, um, I can dump a lot of those meeting notes and minutes.
Yeah, and it was, it's just, um, you just drag and drop it into, I already made some folders. Um, I made for two, I had meeting agendas and minutes for two thousand and eighteen, so I've already uploaded that. And then, so there's two that, I made a folder for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Um, one for the open space plan itself, and then some supporting documents I had, like, there were some different planning documents, like the zoning bylaws and stuff like that that we had. Um, so I have that in there too.
Yeah, it's just a really cool resource, so that every committee member is on the same page. Because, um, we just had this discussion about the budget, and it, you know, one Board of Selectmen member wanted to use Excel, and I kept saying, Excel is not the best tool, because, I know it's familiar for most people, but it's not the best tool, because the only way you can use it is emailing an edited document back and forth a bajillion times. And someone inevitably never knows which version is the most up-to-date version, and so, um, I just.
Once we do the dumps, if we need to, to talk about a document, then you go in and be able to add comments or.
Absolutely.
Dumps, we don't need that for.
Hmm.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Okay, so, um, yeah, so I will send that out after the meeting, and we can get, put it up more documents and organize them and stuff. Um, is there any other new business that we have?
Um, I don't know if this is gonna be necessarily new business, a question or request, but one of the things that the Commission on Disability was planning on, and it will probably get put on hold because of pandemic-related, um, issues that we need to discuss, but we were gonna start a subcommittee for, um, planning the park, and I feel like we should at least have some lines of communication with someone from this committee, seeing like we're overseeing those properties, so. Um, I think that's something that at least we should just have on our radar, that it's gonna come up. Um, and I'm not sure how much involvement is gonna be needed. Um, cause I think we're gonna be utilizing, or trying to utilize existing spaces. Um, so I don't know if it really affects us, but we might just wanna keep in mind, and I don't know if I can just relay that information back and forth and, and check with this committee and let, you know, kinda just inform you guys of what we have planned, or if somebody is interested in being on that subcommittee, just to kinda be a, another person to provide input.
Well, the other thing we could do is have a joint meeting at some point. When things come up, we could meet jointly.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And that way, like, we could all discuss it. A lot of heads are better than one head.
Yeah, like I said, I don't think it's gonna affect anything that, you know, I don't think what one committee is trying to do is gonna really affect the other, because we're not trying to repurpose a piece of property for a different reason, but I think it's nice to keep everybody in the know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think maybe once we have our plan officially approved, maybe what we can do is, um, you know, set up a meeting with them to talk about it and talk about how the ADA is in the plan and the places where it is, you know, where it might be of interest to you guys. So maybe that's something that would help open up doors of communication just by stopping in and.
Yeah.
And how to access those grants as well, once this plan is in effect.
Right.
Oh my god, Jess, you, I have said every single thing that has been on my mind tonight, the second before I said it. It's crazy. Bill, um, along the lines of what the issue Jess just raised, um, so obviously, at the special town meeting, the town, as, you know, all the residents, maybe it wasn't unanimous agreement, but almost everyone, it seems like, agreed that, um, we should put a pause on the previous plans that were done by the other engineering firm in order to allow the ADA commission to have time to review and give suggestions along with, in, in consultation with the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I'm wondering, since we're in this pause phase, and we have a little bit of time before the annual town meeting, and I'm not sure what their timeline is, but we have at least till June. Will having an accepted open space plan make us as a town more eligible for potential grant funds on a ADA compliant park?
Yes, um, you'd probably be in the category, because of your population size, of small town, open space, recreation funding, which means you can usually get up to a hundred thousand dollars in that, in matched funds from the state. I, I forget what your eligibility is. I think you're eligible for sixty-two percent recovery on anything up to a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's a good piece of change.
Yeah.
Plus, there's other monies that would be available, depending on where the location of the park was and what you were doing. Like to the Wild and Scenic, the Ton River Stewardship Council, we funded park improvements before, and we can help you again with those types of things. We can provide match grants to state funding and things like that. But yeah, it does, it opens up a lot of doors, Brett, just like what you were telling us before.
Yeah, and this is why I like, am really a big proponent of commissions. Like, I understand when you're an elected committee, you have the right to do whatever. Like, I understand you don't answer to the Board of Selectmen, and that's fine, like, that's a good thing. But we shouldn't do anything in a silo, because sometimes you just don't know what's out there. And so, for example, in this case, had the funding gone through, then we may have missed an opportunity to potentially get grant funding, um, down the line, so.
Right, over, and it would have been a small, uh, we would have got a small discount for doing it now, where now we open up the door for just a much, much better opportunity. And I think that's what we were trying to express going into that meeting anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's a good philosophy, Kevin. And what the state really looks for too is, they're heavily into partnership building right now. And what they call integrated planning, it's like, what one plan says is reflected in the other plans that are related to it. And this way, we're building a plan, like I said, you know, it, it serendipity, you know, we, we've delayed it. But now, you didn't have an ADA plan a couple of years ago either. In fact, that was being talked about like pie in the sky. Now you've got one with a good analysis that's part and parcel of the open space plan, so we can start to say, yeah, we can work together. Here's how we can work together, here's why we should continue to work together. And like Jess was saying, you know, and when it comes up, we can have these joint meetings and say, yeah, we're consistent across the board. This is what we want. This is a priority. You know, and even things that are related, a lot of people don't think, but in municipal, uh, vulnerability plans, you might have things like, it's some of our parks, gee, we should address stormwater. You know, with infiltration basins or gardens, you know, rain gardens, things like that. You can actually get the money from an MVP program or DEP program to do that, so that you don't have to use recreational funds to do it. So there's all kinds of ways we can really kinda integrate all the planning that we wanna do for a single facility or multiple facilities. So it's great.
Right, and that's why we need to communicate, like, you know, through as many avenues as possible, because like, even, I would have never known that, like, a poss, uh, you know, a possibility like that was even existed. Unless, you know, I talked to somebody like you who has a background in it, and that's kind of what we're trying to do. Um, even on the, even from a broad spectrum on the ADA side of things, is, you know, like Jonathan, the ADA coordinator, is really good, has a wealth of knowledge, but he may not know something like that, where like something that you've been involved with can tie into what we're doing, so.
And now you got Lisa on board, who's used to writing grants, and she's really familiar with the whole spectrum of conservation programs. Like I said, I've worked with her before. So these are things, you know, you got more weapons in the arsenal right now. It's gonna be really good.
It's good for like, I don't think people realize too, it's like, I, I think sometimes we come across, like, I, as me, as a parent with a kid with disabilities, they think, oh, Kevin just wants this awesome park, cause his kid's has a disability. But like, and o, overall, even like, I know like you guys, part of the plan, like where we had talked about the, um, a, a boardwalk at Broad Cove. Like, that brings commerce to our town, even though like we might have to spend more money to make things like that ADA compliant. It's a draw to the town, and it opens up opportunities for people to visit. And then, you know, then you're gonna grab lunch at Alice's, or you're gonna, you know, do, you know, whatever while you're in town. So I think like, the public, it'd be nice for the public to kinda have more of that view of, you know, we're not just doing this to do it. It's gonna help the town.
Even if you're just a parent fiercely advocating for your child, that is absolutely what you should be doing.
Right.
That is, that can be the means to the end right there. That is your job as a parent. And my job as an, as a official is to listen to that concern, right? So for anyone saying that, I think they've missed probably what the purpose of, um, town governance is, you know? You, I, you're giving your time to, to advocate, and I think, um, because there's a lot of people like you in this town, Kevin, that's why we're able to have a decently run, efficient town that somewhat addresses the needs of the people that live in it. You know, we don't have a lot of problems other towns have. Our problem, and what you're getting at, is it's very difficult when you have a lot of immediate needs, especially during a pandemic, to still ask people to think of the bigger picture and the pieces of the puzzle that are being put together by different committees, boards, and commissions. And so, the open space plan. committees, boards and commissions. And so the open space plan is one of those pieces of the puzzle that has been able to come together because of volunteers on different committees who, who reviewed it, gave their input, residents gave input, the committee sought that input from residents and it's a partnership. And um, and that, you know, it's just hard to get people to plan, right? That's been the, the town's problem. I'm talking the town, like the residents in it, the officials. Nobody for many years has plans. And so we're doing that now. And so I think a lot of people have come along, but you know, you still get some convincing to do for some people. They can't see beyond what the immediate needs and concerns are.
Right.
I also think that it lends itself to an openness that we take. We look at everyone in our community, not just a certain few. And we should be looking at everyone in our community and, and their needs.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you guys collectively, like I, I'm, and Jessica and Ellen would going back to the beginning, I, I think you've done more due diligence through the public survey. You know, the public meetings and then going around to each and every board that has a, a piece of this plan and interviewing them with specific questions. That usually doesn't happen. It's usually maybe one or two things. But I mean, going around to six different boards and asking them as well as, you know, doing the public survey.
It's usually a public hearing at the end, Bill, as you know. The thing's already been written.
Yeah, it really is. It's been amazing.
You all did a great job. And that's why people support it, by the way, because they were part of it.
Right? Yeah, that's why we did it, to find out what people wanted.
Yep.
So, um, do we have anything else? Because otherwise uh, it seems like we can just reschedule our next meeting.
Yeah.
So Bill, sorry, Alan, is Bill's going to send us section six, section four and section one?
Yep, I'll do that. And the section four will be the changes to the environmental challenges. Um
Okay.
And yeah, that, and that'll be it. And I'll send it to you and they should be much shorter reads. Actually, those are actually shorter sections. We've done all the big sections of the plan so far. Those will be shorter reads and then um, we'll be ready to rock and roll it.
So then we can vote on it at the next meeting if we have that stuff to look at and
Yeah.
Corrections. Okay.
If you guys like it, we'll vote on it and
That sounds great. Looking forward to that.
I know, taking a meaningful vote. Wow.
That would be January eighteenth, we're looking at, at five PM.
Yeah.
All right, that sounds good. So um so January eighteenth at five. The other thing I, I just realized, we hadn't approved the minutes for the last meeting.
I don't know. I have not had time to do any minutes, so um I will try to work on, and Jess, maybe I'll do this in um Google Docs. Maybe this could be our first foray. I will try to get something in Google Docs. Um, I will watch the meeting, you know, and do like a loose accounting.
Unless Brett, you want me to set, I'll do the minutes for this one and you want to do the minutes for the last one and then I'll set an agenda for the eighteenth?
Yeah, and, and the agenda can just be um, we can do that together.
Reviewing the sections and voting on the plan.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, I think that that's totally fine. That's easy peasy. It's easy enough for me to do the agenda just because town hall goes to the public and I'm there, so it's easy for me to just print it and post it with the town clerk. It's going to be a lot of hoops for you to jump if it's one of you, so.
Okay, I'll do the minutes for this one and, and I'll send them.
Thank you. And I'll do the minutes for the last uh meeting from November. Gracias. Well, this is great. I'm excited. And then everybody just needs to, my understanding is between now and the next meeting, we need to send Bill comments for inclusion.
Yeah, I'll keep sending you things and you just keep sending me comments back. If you have comments, if you have none, that, that would be even better, but send me your comments.
Yes, hopefully we can start using the Google Docs. Does Google Docs have a way to track changes like edits we'll make, Brett?
It tracks literally everything. Literally any edit is tracked automatically. That's why it's a beautiful thing and it saves automatically. You can't ever lose anything.
Okay, cool. So um, so that'll be great. So I'll share that right now after I get off the meeting with you guys and we can start using Google Docs so we can make the comments, any comments that we have.
Fabulous. And I, and is it okay if I sort of um put uh, you know, say at our next meeting on Facebook, like uh something on the town's Facebook that we may vote to adopt the open space plan, just so the public is aware that we did a big thing?
Yeah. Yeah, people, yeah, I think we should celebrate that, promote that.
Absolutely, absolutely. I totally agree.
All right.
All right. Well, have a Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yes.
Happy and healthy holidays. Stay healthy. We've got a lot of work to do. Once we get the plan done, then we really start working.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think I need a vote, right, to adjourn?
Do I vote to adjourn this meeting of the open space committee?
Second.
Great, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned at five thirty-eight. All right, you guys have a great night and any other holiday you guys celebrate.
Happy Merry, it covers both of them.
Bye, guys. Have a great one.